I know.
That's right.
So now it's dark.
It's lighter.
Are you letting me on there?
They just have to all the airplane, they're gonna get so.
I'm not sure.
You are.
Very nice. I think.
Oh, so that was.
Here.
I think so.
Yeah, but just in January.
But I mentioned.
I'll be here. Water. I.
I.
And all. Did they? That's quite important. Um, I'm just trying to remember. But if you're over a lot of your air related.
And I don't ever.
Sixty. I think I'm saying.
I'm saying.
Still, we're. All right. All right, sorry.
It's.
But it never. Yeah. I believe it. I mean, it's fun. And. I think it's time to say something.
I think.
Yeah. Then.
I think.
I think. You know, it's. Why? So. For. This. There you go. Yeah. So. I've been ready. Have you been a war with it? Yes.
Who is that?
This is. Yeah.
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 It's too much harder than you would have.
Yeah.
And it. Awesome.
Everett, how are you? Dan?
Like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, January twenty second, two thousand and twenty five workshop meeting. Uh, we'll begin with a moment of silence followed by pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the routine justice for all.
We have on our agenda the approval of minutes, which will take place uh in next week's legislative meeting. Uh, we have our January eighth workshop, January fifteenth legislative, January fifteenth salary board um eating minutes to be approved next week. Uh, Mr. Pease, executive sessions held between meetings.
Morning, Commissioners. There were two executive sessions that were held between meetings. I'm going to pass it to the solicitor to report out the first one.
Our chief clerk was not present uh for the January sixteen executive session. The commissioners held a uh executive session to obtain advice of legal counsel on personal uh personnel matters and other pending legal matters.
I could have got something I'd like to note for the executive se- session purpose. I just want the record to note that I actually left executive session early uh for the following reasons. Uh, my colleagues have spent a lot of time over the past year discussing the process or in their terms, the lack thereof. I want the record to reflect the new trip process that actually transpired over this past week. One was related to personnel in our chief clerk's position. Executive session was called to discuss the hiring of chief clerk that I just found out about when it was called. I had no prior knowledge or heads up that we were even looking to hire a chief clerk as we currently have an extremely talented, capable person in the role. The name of the person that uh just determined we were going to hire was presented to me during the session. Uh, the position was not advertised and there was no job description posted. It's important that people understand that I believe the chief clerk is viewed as probably one of the most powerful positions in county government. This individual is essentially the chief of staff. He serves as liaison between the commissioner's office and county staff and reports to all three commissioners. I was not even given a heads up that we were searching for a new person to fill that role that's already filled. I did not have the opportunity to have a discussion or interview this person before a job was offered and accepted. Uh, and I'm not going to ever agree to hire somebody before I'm able to even meet someone. All that to say that I was told to either get in line or I will be cut out of county government. And in my twenty years, twenty-one years in serving in this role, I've never been given an ultimatum by anyone. Uh, quite frankly, I've served with a lot of distinctly different people uh at various levels of government, and I I would not respond ever to someone telling me that I shouldn't do due diligence. Quite frankly, it's unacceptable and completely contradictory to what my colleagues state week in and week out. As leaders in this county, we have an obligation to our taxpayers to ensure we are doing our due diligence. It's in hiring for a position as critical as this one especially. All that being said, two votes in favor seem to be be the result of the executive session. This person was offered the position within twenty-four hours and accepted, and to my knowledge, Commissioner Douglas was the only person to meet with him prior to that offer being made. It's a quick twenty-four hour turnaround. Uh, and I don't know what the sense of urgency was. I'm baffled by the support that can be given by my colleagues when one didn't even interview this person to agreeing to their hire. So much for transparency, fairness, and equal involvement as a third. This person is being offered the highest salary ever paid to the chief clerk in Dolphin County? That's a tough pill to swallow and a lot to ask of our taxpayers, especially on the heels of a recent tax increase. Commissioner Priest has stated time and time again that he has a lot of cuts to make, and I'm interested about hearing from those because in this first week, I see a significant amount being added to unbudgeted expenses and savings that are no longer going to be realized because a position that was asked to be cut multiple times is now going to be held vacancy vacant for over a year. All that to say, a few days after this individual was offered the position and accepted, he reached out to me to schedule a meeting. We had a great discussion and he seems to be extraordinarily highly capable and an eager individual who I believe has the potential to serve Dolphin County very well. However, I cannot in good faith support the way this process went down or an unbudgeted expense this significant without hearing how my colleagues plan to cover the difference or the opportunity to hear and ask questions about philosophy, near knowledge and experience related to county government sort of priorities and the basic amount of things you'd want to know related to experience for somebody to come into such a critical role. Uh, and my primary reason for doing this was just to talk about leaving uh executive session and making sure that it was noted I left and and for what those reasons were. Thank you.
Can you continue with executive sessions held between meetings?
Yes. On January twenty first, the commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, RFP processes, matter of public, matters of public safety, the two thousand and twenty-five budget, right to no law, legal review, contract review, and matters of personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. We'll now open it up for public participation. Uh, just a reminder, we are live streaming and uh there's a three minute limit. This is on public participation on agenda items only. Seeing none, we will now head to our director and guests uh portion. We have Jason Graves and Brad Jones here to share with us about the LERTA uh for Harrisburg City. Uh, thank you both for being here. Come on up.
Morning, Brad. Jason.
Morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you doing?
Morning, smarting.
Morning. So I will start off. Yes, we are actually asking for a consideration from the county as we did from city of uh Harrisburg as far as the city council and also with uh the school board of Harrisburg School District to actually extend the learner for one year going into January. I'm sorry, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five of this year. Uh, reason being, we are looking for ways to amend and actually make better um the LERTA as far as like how it is now. Previously in two thousand and fourteen, when it was actually brought into play for the LERTA, we actually have this one now that said that's basically expired on the thirty-first. Um, it was rushed. Um, this LERTA does not really benefit the city, the county, or the school district as far as like what are we going to get back in return when you have developers or people using when they actually get task credits or actually get a tax um any kind of tax levies as far as we knew to stretch in the building. Uh, one of the biggest things that we need to have is where we have Mr. Brad Jones here is more new development in the city of Harrisburg. Um, when we have to do that collectively. So the main reason why I'm here is just to ask permission, if any questions you have about the LERTA. Um, it's just to make clear that we need to move forward in a progressive way to actually make more development better in the city of Harrisburg and the surrounding areas that we're going to have to work together cleverly.
Yes, and I'll just follow on with Jason's comments and say that uh we as Harris Town Development Corporation is a uh mission driven uh nonprofit with the sole purpose of redeveloping and revitalizing downtown Harrisburg have um have used the current LERTA uh on regular projects that um have been very difficult financially to do uh things like the Benmar Apartments, which was an office conversion to apartments done in two thousand and eighteen, like the Menaker Project across the street here uh that was done in two thousand and twenty-two. These projects and and many others like it have been um very difficult to to make the numbers work uh to allow for those office to apartment conversions uh and the the LERTA has been very instrumental in in helping us with that. It is in a, it's a, it's a ten-year LERTA that allows for uh an abatement of future taxes on future on on the improvements to the project. And and we think it's a very important incentive to maintain. We appreciate the city and the school district for uh extending this one year to allow for, you know, I think the the program uh could benefit from some changes that would make it better and stronger and more effective. Uh, we're very supportive of the one-year extension and and, you know, just as an example of uh that, you know, we're, we're working on the county's former building across the street, the Veterans Building. And uh we're, we'll be doing a a forty-unit uh senior living project there this year and that project um is a very uh tricky uh partnership that with several groups and um we think we have it figured out, but it's about a, the abatement is about a hundred thousand dollars a year of savings, which allows this project to go forward uh over the ten-year period. So it's a, it's a good example of the kind of project that, you know, we, we've struggled to get that project started for the last few years and we're going to finally start on it this year, but uh the other thing I'll just say is that with all the office um buildings coming back on the market with the work from home strategy, yeah, sort of, you know, really impacting this downtown, we're going to need to do more of these type of conversions. We're going to be converting a lot more office buildings. We're going to need all the incentives we can get. So this abatement will be very important. So appreciate your consideration here today. Thank you.
Yeah, now that's like the note that we already have within the past, within two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two, there were several projects that are already deemed to actually start building. Again, we all know planning sometimes comes with a football where something has to go wrong or somebody has to get fixed. So a lot of those projects were actually depending on the LERTA going forward. That was one of the things also. And with for Brad's uh to note for Brad, as far as like getting more development within downtown, which is a really, really big focus because it's a focal point, not just for the city of Harrisburg, it's a focal point for the entire county in itself. Um, there are probably as prior to the discussion, we probably would want to have like individually um as far as what we can do to actually get more development downtown. As I know, we have, there are a lot of developers or initiatives that want to come downtown, but one of the issues we already know is the parking is very hot. So the parking deters a lot of businesses from coming downtown, and that's one of the things also. We want to get more development, especially for more rehab renovations uh for some of the conversions for the office buildings. That's one thing that we're going to have to work on as well.
So am I understanding correctly that this is a one-year extension?
Yes.
During this one year, you're going to be doing work to determine how the program could either be expanded or or targeted in a way to have a bigger impact? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we're going to actually put in a a committee together to actually work on the legislation for a new LERTA. Um, some of the things that need to be tweaked ours, I I know I've had a few people that look at the LERTA and actually want to do development here in the city. It's simplified, but it's confusing at the same time, um especially with some of the pieces are added into it. So it deters people from actually wanting to do development within side of the city of Harrisburg because through the press point, materials are high. Um, and at certain points like they fluctuate at any given time and that kind of deteriorates on uh especially how you're actually going to be paying out workers or employees that actually work for their projects.
Do you have a number for how many people utilize the program in the last year?
Yes, um, so we actually did one. So I have one for the past three years.
That's fine. Yeah.
So within the past three years, from twenty-one to twenty-four, um, there were a total of forty-three applicants that were actually submitted applications for LERTA. Um, the possibility for the amount they could have done was four hundred and twenty-six, and that goes off the number of, that number goes off the amount of what the project could actually cost. So uh with Greg Diller from the county, we look at an assessment between forty to fifty thousand dollars uh that would actually um be approved wa- approval wise to actually get alert um for the amount that you're actually going for a basically for a renovation uh or a bill. Uh, that's basically the termination of how what can actually make the the property actually extend or go past a certain amount of money because again, like for a kitchen renovation or something like that, something that's a large dollar amount that's actually going to make the property value go up. And a lot of times with tax, the tax assessment, they look at what's going on the outside of property. If you're doing an extension, X, Y, and Z. So that actually takes in consideration, but four hundred and twenty-six, um, a lot of those applications, for the most part, are not new development. Majority of them are not new development. They're basically renovations. So the main thing that we need is new development. That's one of the things that we're hurting, especially a lot of the.
So over the next year, you anticipate incentivizing the LERTA in a way that incentivizes new development?
Yes.
Create crafting LERTA and with incentivize new.
Yes.
All right, I'll leave it to my colleagues to ask other questions.
Well, first of all, thank you both uh for the great work that you have done and are doing to have the residents of the county, specifically the city of Harrisburg. Uh, it's great to see that you've already uh been with the school board and city council to get the support that's necessary. Hopefully, uh, we are the capital county, capital city here. Hopefully, uh, our state legislature will start tackling any challenges here. Uh, we have a large percentage of tax-exempt properties in the city. Um, and we're well aware of the of the challenges that that brings. Uh, but I have a question for you. So you talked about folks working from home. So this isn't just a a a state federal government issue, folks working from home. Now, this is a a business-wide industry issue. Folks stop coming downtown. Again, we're hoping that more people at the state do start coming back to work. Uh, but for the local businesses, that's occurring as well.
Yes, it is. A lot of service businesses, legal, financial services, insurance are, you know, also working from home. In addition to not quite as maybe as much as the Commonwealth, but you know, we're our main tenant here in the capital city is the Commonwealth. So that is having the biggest impact, but it is certainly uh also going on with other uh private sector businesses as well. And so, you know, we're, we're going to have to really uh work hard to repurpose a lot of interesting and historic structures that I think uh could make great residences, but we'll, it'll be hard work and we'll need every incentive we can, we can get.
Mm-hmm. So when I wanted to add one note to that, Mr. Priest, uh, one of the things that, again, going to Brad's note as well, um, the conversions need to happen. This may have been probably an idea that probably should have happened some time ago because again, just like Brad said, our largest contributor is the state capital. Uh, as far as employment, our thing is we need to move people downtown. So if you want to get more businesses downtown, you want to get more incentives downtown, you want to get more people downtown, more foot traffic, we need to have more residents downtown because again, state workers, you're getting eight, thirty, and four, nine, and five, and after that, you're back to the same mundane thing. Africa's gone. Now, on the weekends, what are you going to do as well? So we need to, our focus needs to get more, basically bring more people downtown. That's one of the main focuses to is work on the downtown company.
Couple of que- questions. Who who's the current LERTA administrator?
I am.
You are, Jason. That's an interesting job.
Be the least.
The the uh, again, I've got a lot of familiarity with both the process of learners and the city learner, and it's often been viewed by development interests as a barrier, not a help.
That's.
Uh, to the ability to gain investment and attract new business into downtown. What specifically are you targeting? Uh, that you believe are those barriers to change in this review? And my question would be, over the next year, um, are the current terms of the LERTA, you're just asking those to be extended under the current terms because you know, the last time it became a political football.
Yes.
There's a lot of challenges and 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 issues and interests that were at the table. Um, what uh, you know, sort of what will happen over the next year where you're asking for this extension? And then secondly, what are you targeting related to those barriers as you seen as a LERTA administrator that you think can be more helpful and attractive? Uh, I'd like to sort of get an advanced idea.
All right. How much time do we have?
Yeah.
Obviously. Um, I know two of the barriers um in the system, the main things that actually drive our LERTS, only actual pieces that we have in our legislation for the LERTA is minority participation and prevailing wage. So that's, those are one of the big hindrances when you're actually looking for new development. So if you're doing a project, probably maybe a hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at materials, costs, labor, and again, it's going to be the return back for the investment. So going forward, then we want to have, again, unions, prevailing wage, so forth, but it has to be some kind of give and take with that to actually make something viable, have to make a viable project because things can get expensive, especially with the cost of materials now. You're looking at upwards of probably sixty up or sixty to ninety dollars an hour for prevailing wage job, which is good money, which people should get paid, but there has to be some kind of give and take or projects will not be able to get done.
And are you keeping sort of a form where there's feedback from folks who say, I love to apply for the LERTA, but these are the reasons why.
Yes.
And those will help drive your decision-making and discussion around the changes because it certainly should not be a barrier. We want to do all we can to help the capital city be vibrant because as the city goes, so does the region. And we want to ensure that we don't provide that kind of barrier concern, but it's sort of a gateway and help lead the way.
Yeah, especially to Mr. Priest's point, too, as far as like the taxes and pieces, we over fifty percent of taxes is input in the city of Harrisburg, which is a big hindrance as well. So again, what kind of revenue are you actually bringing into the city? Um, we're doing a lot of affordable housing projects, what's needed, but in the same sense, we still need market rate and higher than level of playing field. So again, you want to do more, you want to do more affordable housing pieces. We actually need more pieces that are actually going to be revenue into the city, more tax incentives into the city.
And and besides, you know, just the extension and I think our formal ability to to cooperate through that, what else do you need from the county?
Uh, just your support. That's the one thing your support is. Like I said, this is probably a longer conversation. I know there are people here that actually want to probably speak, but this is probably a longer conversation. Uh, the main thing that again, me and Brad are here and a lot of other people were just looking for your support and what we can actually do to actually make this place a better place.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Just, just for clarity, the the one-year extension has been voted on by the school and the city?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Been passed, and now the county just needs to to make that decision.
That's correct.
Uh, uh, Mr. Pease, is that on, is that, is that planned to be uh an action item soon for the commissioners?
The the plan would be if um me, if my office and the solicitor office can get it together, get it together, it would be next week. We'll have that ordinance on for consideration.
Understood. Is there any other questions in my col- for my colleagues? Hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Taking time to.
Thank you.
To give this report to.
No problem at all.
Now going to welcome up Treasurer DeFrancesco and District Attorney Chardo to talk about the Hotel Tax Delinquency Fund's update.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Happy to be sitting here before you today, and I'll be thanking a bunch of people this morning, but um it may not surprise you how quickly things move when you start to talk about filing criminal charges against individuals. As you all know, um, I first came in here, I think sometime around mid last year uh to share with you that we had one hotel in the community that was uh very delinquent in their hotel tax. And for the people that might be watching on, you know, the live stream, uh, that hotel tax is a little bit different than, say, an income tax or real estate tax where you take your income and you decide when and how you're going to pay your taxes. This tax is set up in a way where literally the hotels collect the tax from the people who are staying in the room, and they immediately the next month are supposed to turn that tax over, and it goes to support things like tourism promotion and so forth, things like that in this area. So we had one uh player who literally was um had not paid their. had not paid their taxes since June of 22. And when you compile the interest and the penalties, which we are still doing as a matter of fact, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Uh, this facility was well over $500,000 back on, again, these taxes that literally they're supposed to collect one month, transmit to us the next month. So uh, you all know, we went through um, earlier this year, or earlier last year and put a lien against the property because there was some talk that they would be selling the property. They wanted to protect the interest of the local region. Uh, we continued to communicate with them to no avail and that number continued to grow. Uh, at that point, we turned to District Attorney Charter's office and we asked him if he would be willing to consider the option of filing criminal charges, which was an extreme step. And uh, Fran, if you would, address.
Sure. Uh, I think that SCOTF laws sort of count on uh, stakeholders not communicating. And uh, we have a county where we communicate and we communicate well. And when uh, Nick came to me and, and told me about this, I was uh, I was stunned to learn that that these SCOTF laws sort of make a practice of this in other communities. And we are fortunate that uh, we have a statute, uh, you know, in Pennsylvania, theft is a theft is a theft. And uh, no matter what form it takes, and theft by failure to make part disposition of funds received is, is one of those types of thefts. And if they're receiving these funds under an obligation to, to pay uh, these uh, this hotel tax and they're not doing it, that's a theft. And when it's approaching $600,000 or more, that's a big theft. And so our county detectives uh, got involved uh, at my request. Uh, and Detective Roxanne Snyder, I stopped down on my way here to see if she could join us uh, because she did the light work on this. Uh, but uh, as a good uh, cop that she is, she's out on the street doing work right now, so she couldn't join us. Uh, but uh, she uh, brought their attention that uh, we are going to pursue this as a criminal matter because that's just what it uh, is unless we get a check right quick uh, for the amount owed. And uh, we got quick resolution.
My office received a check, I think it was within 24 hours of her reaching out to the facility. Now, we had been working on this for several months, but within 24 hours of the detective reaching out, we received a check for um, Uh, and again, I want to stress that that money does still, that still does not bring us up to current. So from the time that invoice went out, they paid the full invoice, but that was an invoice from, I believe, uh, possibly August of last year or somewhere around that. So further interest and penalties have been added on top of that. Not to mention, they still have not been making their monthly payments. So this would get us up to roughly June of last year, but we still have, and we have to literally go through do a new account. And I want, at this point, I want to thank Controller Bateman as well because her office did the audit that gave us a hard number and their office doesn't normally do audits for the hotels. But we requested this one special in her office and her team went out and, and gave us a hard number. Uh, and that was really for the lean. Um, and that's basically what's now been paid up. Um, with the exception of some interest yet to be paid. Uh, but at this point, the way the um, reporting on the hotel tax works, we really don't know what they owe us until they report each month. And so the only way we could find out is to send an auditor in again and, and look at their paperwork and make sure. Uh, so today I'm just happy to stand before you and say, we continue to make progress. It is not a done deal. Uh, but we have a check in hand. It's been deposited in the bank to the best of my knowledge. It has cleared the bank. Uh, and again, this happened last week, so we want to make sure that that, it clears. Um, but on top of that, there's still a significant amount of money that we're waiting at a practice where they begin to pay every month as they are supposed to. So we'll continue to stay on them. And again, um, I just, I can't say enough about the district attorney's involvement. Uh, the detective is, is uh, the DA Charter mentioned, did a fantastic job. Um, but it's amazing how once you got involved, things happen. So it's unfortunate that we have a player in our community that is struggling because again, can't stress it enough. This isn't like you're choosing how to spend limited revenue. You are literally picking up a tax and handing it off. And if anything happens in that transaction other than that, we've got a problem. So this isn't revenue for the, for the hotel. This is, this is a tax that they are the vehicle to collect.
Thank you both very much for your commitment on this. And uh, this is a significant win for the county. And um, yeah, just thank you for, for your time and energy on this. Can I ask a couple of questions first? Um, how many others are delinquent right now, like past year? We'll, we'll say that.
I don't have an exact count for you, but for the most part, the ones that, the ones that we hold as delinquent tend to pay up in shorter terms. They may go a month or two off.
Gotcha.
Uh, but we, we, we really don't have anybody that got into this arena where they were two years behind.
Is there a system here of gaming this for the purpose of investing the money and making interest off of it? I'm just curious if that's a system that's taking place to where they're like, oh, a penalty at the end, but the penalty does, the penalty doesn't outweigh what I was able to create in revenue.
I think that's their, their manner of business. I mean, this, this was the Holiday Inn. And so uh, when it ceased to be a Holiday Inn, uh, and uh, the Red Lion Inn took over. Apparently this is the, their manner of doing business, not just here, but elsewhere.
Okay.
So, but the interest, you know, the, besides the penalty, the interest is I believe 9%, I want to say, yeah, 9% interest. So it's, it's
I mean, you'd have to invest that pretty
Yeah, really. And, and the other piece of it is if you think about it, because it's not revenue coming in, if they are taking it and using it as revenue, they're going to have a tax problem. And secondly, you know, the bottom line is if they're leveraging it in some way, they're still not remitting it.
Yeah.
So no matter how you look at it.
Doesn't make sense.
There's criminal activity if you're not turning it over.
I think they're banking on people not collecting.
Sure.
Ever.
Sure. Yeah. Colleagues, any questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to our district attorney, our treasurer and our controller. How refreshing it is when you communicate, work together, get things done. Thank you so much. Uh, I also have to give a shout out to former treasurer Janice Creason, who started this process many years ago during her term here. I'm sure if she's listening in or she'll hear about this down the road, uh, she's going to be very happy with the work that you continue to do. Uh, it's a good day for Dolphin County residents and uh, much appreciated for your joint efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, to my colleagues and thank you for your efforts and the, the, the results and the results to come. Just have a, a technical question for the controller. I know uh, we worked on this and, and this is a uh, something that's going to need support. If you're going to be successful in ensuring that we are able to identify, because the, I've seen this list. It's the same folks over and over and over again. But if we're going to identify those lists, I know that we've had a discussion and hired uh, over the years uh, for this direct effort, individuals within your office to do this auditing function. So from my perspective, you know, I want to figure out where that is. And to ensure that in, in order for us to continue the efforts to collect those dollars, do we have enough staffing? And are they still assigned to those particular audits? And I know you do them based upon a random draw and, and all of that, but
We do. So um, I have two auditors in my office. Um, they currently audit every tax collector every year. Um, they also audit the MDJ offices. Um, we do that on a two-year rotating basis. Um, so we do one group, you know, eight of them in one year, and then they do two years, and then the next year we do the other group. And then we do in, uh, we do a row officer every year. Um, we're trying to hit the offices that collect money um, in the county. They've not been audited yet. So I'm sorry, Holly, I know you're in the room. I'm not picking on you, but like tax claim offices that handle a whole lot of money. And basically, so just so everybody understands, my office, uh, I do not have CPAs on staff. So these are compliance audits. These are not financial audits. They're compliance audits. Um, hotel, we, we, we do approximately eight to 10 hotel audits every year, um, depending on how much time they have left um, to build that in. Um, and then the audits are actually um, looked over by Boyer and Ritter. Um, because we need an external CPA to make sure that, you know, we're following everything appropriately.
Because there are areas in county government like tax assessment that you make an investment to get things on the tax rolls earlier. You are able to earn interest on those dollars and the investment pays for itself. In these cases, I think that was the justification. Invest in this area to do exactly what we're seeing happen in front of us related to the DA and Nick's cooperation. Make that investment and those salaries will be paid for potentially through the reimbursement of additional hotel dollars in collection. So
And they are. We currently do receive um, hotel um, tax dollars to fund parts of um, several of my employees. So some of my accountants as well, because um, they're handling parts of that. Um, and then my auditors, it's part of their salary. Because like I said, they do other audits besides um, hotel tax.
Thank you for the clarification. We have that support to continue to help you move in that direction.
And if I could, just one final statement, just um, you know, again, these, these uh, we use the word tax and, and I know that brings a certain feeling to most people's minds. Uh, in this particular case, the hotels have been pretty good across the board because they understand that's going back to, to be invested in their industry. Um, and so the other thing we have to celebrate today is there was one player within their industry that was not carrying their weight. And it was a significant amount of weight that was missing. So uh, we wanted, I just want to say thank you to those hotels that, that participate, not just in abiding by the law, but also who participate and understand when, when all the hotels are working together as well. Our region is a stronger tourist industry. Um, and this particular property is one that could be a, a really good player in our industry. So we hope to do that. Uh, but again, I just want to thank, uh, thank each of you for your continued support of tourism. Thanks to DA for his participation in this. I want to thank the solicitor's office for the part that they did in, in bringing this all together as well. Um, your auditors are fantastic. Uh, and I want to make sure that they're being validated also that we're following up on what they do. So please send the appreciation back to them as well.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Nick. I do want to acknowledge Attorney Benaventano's work. He really headed this up from the solicitor's office and did a phenomenal job. We're very lucky to have him as part of the solicitor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benaventano. Now move on to uh, human services, uh, Ms. Whedon.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I don't have anything that requires a vote today, but um, I just wanted to ask if you guys had any questions on the pack, personnel packet.
I, I do. I'll follow in the light of my colleagues and the questions they've asked. Are there any positions in here that are unbudgeted?
No, they're all approved.
So, so all of these are covered by amendments and adjusted to our county budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
You have anything? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning. We like it. Okay. Um, I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out yesterday. It'll be ready for approval next week and happy to answer any questions.
I have none. Anybody else? Thank you so much, Mr. Davis.
I have a couple of budget-related questions, nothing related to the purchase order packet. Um, but budget-related questions. Um, I, I just asked Sweden about whether or not the, there were all, all these items were appropriately budgeted for. I, I know that the, the discussion earlier related to the chief clerk's position uh, is something that I'd like to hear a little bit about whether or not we've done any budget amendment cut or the ability to cover the cost of this particular position. And I want to also take a look at sort of expenses and keeping positions open and what that impact could be to the budget.
Um, I don't know. I, I wasn't involved in any discussion with budget amendments or removing dollars around. There's certainly ways that that could be covered, but I don't know what the, the exact plan is. Now, as it sits now, without any amendments, changes or anything, um, it would be about a $63,000 increase over budget at the rate that's in the packet.
And again, in order for us to cover those positions, there would have to be either required cut or a budget amendment that would need to occur in order to ensure that it's budgeted before us. And I didn't mean to ask you that question without having this advanced conversation with you. So, but it, it's currently not, it's suffice to say, there's not a plan that's been presented that it's budgeted for yet.
Not presented to me, no.
And, and again, I, I want to make this clear because uh, I'd like to take a look at what we actually have budgeted for this position. And take a look at what that impact may be to our actual bottom line of our county budget. Because it's a little bit more complicated than just adding a position. And when something is budgeted, it doesn't mean that you've spent those dollars. So uh, for these positions that we have and, and are listed today, uh, and as it relates to the clerk or the chief clerk's office, there are two individual positions. One is uh, the chief clerk and the other one's the assistant chief clerk. Am I correct?
Um, deputy chief clerk.
Deputy chief clerk.
Policy and administration, I believe is the official title.
And those positions are budgeted uh, at currently 118,000, just for salary line items, 118,139 and 97,974.
Correct.
Uh, and when we talk about, you know, again, it's, that's salary line items, but there are additional expenses that are always placed into the budget that will uh, clearly determine how much the actual costs are to county taxpayers. Because uh, it's not just what's budgeted in salaries. There's also a $25,000 distributed annually uh, cost to benefits, uh, which is assigned to personnel. There's also uh, retirement, which is between eight and 10% of your salary. I did it on the low end here just to get some, you know, sort of conservative numbers on these costs. The other part is FICA. I think it's 7.65% that the county has to match related to those contributions. We also have, um, we also have dental, uh, and we also have vision, uh, that are all a part of that package. Um, and I was taking a look at sort of what the expenses were last year versus what the expenses will be in this new position. And it is a, a significant difference because currently uh, within this um, budgeted office, Vince's salary is at 118,139. Uh, with all of those benefits, including uh, his um, uh, his, his benefits package and, and healthcare, it's an all-in at 163,593. The other position is budgeted for 97,774 related to the salary. Now this position has been discussed for years to be cut. Hey, we can cut this position. We can figure out a way to cut this position. We may not need this position. Uh, so it's been left vacant over this year and that has resulted in 97,000 in savings to the county. So when you talk about what's budgeted versus what is spent, those 97,000 dollars were saved this year. They were not spent. So now we've got two positions that we're funding. One for 160,000 and some change, one for 118,000 and some change. Uh, those two, um, they're equivalent salary and, and benefits amounts uh, come out to around 374,500. Uh, in that, again, we are not going to realize this year, the savings of the 97,000 that would have existed for not having that position filled. And we've asked for quite some time to be able to get Mr. Peace help. We know administratively, he has needed a level of support. Uh, and you know, I'm happy that I'm not chained to a desk at the moment and continuing to do the administrative work of county government in a cooperative and helpful manner with all of the capable staff here in Dolphin County. But that support has been needed for quite some time. Uh, but we are going to go from a salary range of 163,593 to a cumulative salary of 374,500. You take out the savings that exist, it's almost at least a quarter of a million in, input or impact in additional spending just for one position here in Dolphin County. Would that be a correct statement?
Correct. When you look at, you know, net savings plus a budget impact and total that all together, that would be kind of your net from that.
So, so again, I, I just want to make it clear that, and it's important to me and important in the budget process. And now that we're able to have some open conversation, the idea of budgeting things are not just based upon salaries. When things are budgeted, they are not always expended. This, the actual county has balanced the budget over the last several years in being able to manage vacancies in a way that have saved significant dollars. As a matter of fact, under the former administration, I think they had a $7 million vacancy adjustment. So vacancies are a critical component to being able to manage this budget. And absent that vacancy and the additional expenses, there's a significant challenge related to how do we make a budget amendment? How do we make that budget adjustment? And what is the cost of this new position actually going to cost? And again, this is not reflective of the candidate, this is simply reflective of cost. Because we are on the heels of a tax increase in Dolphin County. And this is a tough pill for taxpayers to swallow. The idea that you are going to be adding a quarter of a million in expense in one week to a county bottom line of a budget is not a, a really easy and, and good decision uh, to not be vetted, talked about and, and had a level of conversation about how do we plan for these things? So I, I just wanted to ask you if my budget numbers were correct. What that impact would be to the bottom line of the budget and to be clearly articulate that uh, those, there is about 63,000 based upon my calculation over what was actually budgeted for those two positions and what type of budget amendment needs to occur in order for this position to be moved forward on the agenda next week. But that does not take into account the additional savings that are also a part of this transaction by filling an unfilled position. And I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, last year, did we go for a period of time without a press secretary where we saved money on this floor? And this is a floor budget. It's the commissioner's budget, correct?
Correct.
Um, did we go for a period of time without the deputy chief clerk? Did we go for a period of time without the deputy chief clerk, quite a long period of time where we saved money? So we had two staff positions that sat vacant for a significant amount of time in which we benefited as a county for that. Yet, did we is the question. Because when you're understaffed, the question becomes about your effectiveness, your effectiveness to be able to get the job done. And I'm not going to speak for my colleague to my left, but what I will say is I certainly do not think we are effective with those particular, with those particular vacancies. And I think we need effectiveness on this floor. And I believe with these hires, are we set to be over budget with these hires if we don't hire a press secretary? I'm not saying that we aren't going to hire a press secretary, but are we set to be over budget?
No. So as it sits now.
That's all I need. No is all I need. Commissioner Priest, do you have any comments?
I'm not going to engage in any additional political grandstanding here amongst my colleagues. It's time to govern. We're already going into the second month of 2025. We are way behind in so many areas. Somebody fires party here in the county. It's time to put them out. Thank you.
Moving on, Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Peace.
I have nothing to report unless there were questions to me or if you wanted me to.
I do have a question for you. Did we, did we recently this morning get out an engineering RFP?
Yes. So today I had a RFP for professional engineering services posted at the county website and county Facebook. And then following that, at least a press release, so if any individual or firm is interested in that, you may go to the county website either under the news section, or you can search professional engineering services and you can find that RFP. If you have any questions, you can direct them towards me or any submissions as well.
I want to emphatically thank Chief Clerk Peace and Solicitor's Office for prioritizing getting that engineering RFP out. It's been a priority of Mr. Mr. Priest, Commissioner Priest and I for quite some time. And in one week, we've been able to see that through. I'm thankful for their work. Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. There is one item requiring board action. That item has been reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Thank you so much. The training packet, I believe there are two items for vote today on the training packet. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Matters requiring board action. We have one matter requiring board action today. Do I have a motion?
So move?
Move by Commissioner Harwick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Former business? There is no former business. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hartwick.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Floyd Stokes for the events that he put on yesterday in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Day and the idea of reading and participating and then following them up by the engagements of continuing to sow the seeds. We have a long way to go, and ultimately, we should be all a part of a larger plan and solution to be helping to both retoo and emulate what we have seen play out by Dr. King. And certainly in this world, we would love to see more love and a whole lot less hate. Final thing is, just heard about political grandstanding. Talking about budgets is not political grandstanding. Talking about budgets is the primary role of Dolphin County Commissioner. We have a fiduciary responsibility to be able to discuss both legal and financial matters. Political grandstanding is putting cookies in a jar. The idea of figuring out a way to actually discuss what I believe the county code requires us to, which is, you know, the fiduciary responsibility, our statutory responsibility, all of our regulatory compliance issues, those things are not sexy, but they are clearly defined in the county code. And they may be viewed as grandstanding. I view them as essential related to the ability to discuss and plan. And when I'm not included in those discussions, we will have a public discussion about it, and it will not be political grandstanding.
Mr. Priest.
Wow, it's like Groundhog Day back to the past year of every meeting I was at where it was brought up by the two commissioners that we were not included in discussions. I want to also agree with Commissioner Hartwick. I want to thank Floyd Stokes for putting on the MLK Reading Day. I had the privilege of being at St. Thomas Roasters in Linglestown. I want to thank the hosts for having us there and joining Dr. Kamika Campbell. We got to read to a group of children, and that was certainly a wonderful day and an opportunity to spend time in the community and with the community, talking to folks about his legacy. Thank you.
I also had an opportunity to read at the Whittaker Center with Dr. Ebony. We read a book together and thankful for Floyd Stokes and his work bringing people together to celebrate literacy on MLK Day. I think it's a great opportunity for his legacy to live on. I also want to thank our Public Works around the county for snow removal and taking care of the roads over the last few days. Certainly, there's many municipalities that have been working overtime around the clock to ensure safe roads and safe travel for all of us who are here right now and those throughout the county. And, you know, we have a lot of great municipalities that make up our county. We're thankful to them for their work during this time. I also want to note the shelters that exist for the unhoused that have been working hard through these extreme temperatures and certainly those who are also serving the unhoused, even those who maybe aren't willing to go into a shelter or don't have that opportunity. Want to thank all those people who are doing work to serve that community in this trying time. I do want to speak briefly just to process because process does matter to me and briefly to comments made. Following last week's meeting, I met with HR to discuss my vision for some things that needed to happen on the fourth floor in order for things to get, you know, in my opinion, better staffed up. And I met and asked what the proper process was from our HR. I wanted to ensure that all the steps were handled in an appropriate way. And I followed their advice to the exact letter. Our executive session was an opportunity for all commissioners to be a part of the discussion. In executive, in executive session, when we are talking personnel matters, when there are two head nods, we can begin the process. It is all informal until it is voted on in a personnel packet. And ultimately, that's still, that action is still yet to take place. But everyone was included, far more than I was included many times in personnel being hired here over the last year. With that said, later today, I'll be publishing the oversights. As chairman, it is my role and responsibility to set the oversights of the departments. Those will be distributed to the chief clerk and the chief clerk will distribute those to the commissioners. And then following that, we'll ensure that directors are made aware. Thank you. With that said, we're now moving on to public participation. Public participation, just a reminder, we are live streaming our meetings and public participation is three minutes. Anyone for public participation?
Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. We heard today about a delinquent hotel, half million dollars plus behind in paying hotel tax. That hotel sits in Swatara Township along with 24 other hotels. And it was interesting to see the actions taken to collect it, how serious it was financially for the county to deal with a delinquency like that for the hotel tax. I'm here to lobby for Swatara Township and the communities that have hotels. It's also serious to have a percentage of that go for public safety in the communities. The money was delinquent here, and we've seen things in the paper of where it went. People didn't know who was getting paid, what lobbyist was getting money from the hotel. We heard from Mr. Bateman that it costs money to audit the hotels, but it costs money to police the hotels. It costs money to provide fire protection to the hotels. The roads have to be cleared for the tourists in and out of the hotels. Almost every place that I know of that has a tourist hotel tax provides for public safety. And it was ironic that we heard from the district attorney how important it was that it was a crime, that it was a theft. Let's think about the county's role in the theft of dollars from the local municipalities that have those hotels. It's 5%. 1% of that would be 20%, which I think is the minimum that should go for public safety. We're hearing about new starts, fresh starts. Let's get it right this time. That was not money to come in here to go to someone's wife. That wasn't money to come in here to go to somebody's consultant. Those things went first. Public safety went second. We can fix it now going forward. And you were talking about one hotel. I said, we have 23 and two others in the construction phase. And it is not anything on the citizens. We heard that it was a tax for the people staying there. It's not on the residents. It can greatly benefit Swatara Township, public safety codes. A lot of these hotels that have been up for years are starting to deteriorate. We're seeing all types of issues that cost the local municipality money while this body is collecting millions. I believe it's over 15 million per year. Nothing is coming back to the municipalities. There's plenty of money there to share. And I do like the newfound scrutiny on public dollars that we heard from Commissioner Hartwick. After years of not knowing things, when money is going out inappropriately and the news asks questions, no one knows the answer. Now we know on an individual job to the T, how much somebody's getting for benefits and everything else. I think we should apply that scrutiny to some other issues, go back in the past, find out what mistakes were made, move forward, and it's a new day. That was my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. One of Swatara Township. I was grateful today to see the composure with which both Commissioner Priest and Commissioner Douglas held themselves together while hearing Commissioner Hartwick try to explain to everyone how the budget works. I am old enough to remember just a few weeks ago when Commissioner Hartwick, you almost launched over that ledge up there to attack a department head for what you call was a slush fund. And now you're explaining that the budget that you voted for in the past contained what could be described as a slush fund, and you're upset about it. And you're upset about it in a very petty manner because you no longer get to sit at the center of the stage. And you have once again tried to make the business of this government all about you, while you tried to explain to the controller how to do her job, while you tried to explain to everyone else how to do their job. And what you're really trying to do is make it seem like it's really complicated. And like, you're the only person who can do it. But what we've seen here this week is that it turns out you're not. And I'm just really grateful that other people are willing to take up the mantle and have a vision for what can change around here, not just what can stay the same. I'm happy to see that we're getting money back that people paid for the community. I think that's a good use of government. It's a much better use of government than going after, you know, everyday people for crimes and stuff like that, as was suggested before. I like the way that you guys explain. I come here, I want to understand how my county government works. I've learned a lot about how it works and how it shouldn't since I started coming here a couple of months ago. And I just also want to really say I really appreciate the way Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Priest, how you explain this stuff. And don't try to make it difficult because the truth is, is it's not that hard. Like, it's not that hard. It's plus and minus. Budgeted money is you voted to allocate a certain amount of money to be spent this year. The fact that you expected that that money wouldn't be spent as a savings means that you weren't doing your job. Every bit of that money should be spent to the betterment of the county and the people of this county. And I'm glad it's a new dawn and a new day, and I hope that soon we can have meetings without pettiness from a commissioner who's just upset that he no longer has the power he thought he deserves. So, thank you. Y'all have a great rest. Y'all week.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I'm really grateful that I got to sit today. And I would like to talk about last week. There's a sign there at the door that says that the occupancy of this room is 57 people. And that was strictly enforced last week. In my lifetime, and I'm older than dirt, and I've been to a lot of community meetings and councils and commissioners' meetings. I have never seen the occupancy enforced except at county meetings and prison board meetings. And so that just makes me think, why is that being enforced? Now, I mean, I want everyone to be safe, and I do not want there to be an issue. Should we have to evacuate the room because of fire or anything else? So please don't get me wrong about that, but the way in which things were enforced. Apparently, even news media and staff who didn't, and staff who did not need to be here because they were not making any comment on the business of the day, were included in that count. That's fine. But then if there's too many people, and there are people who do want to comment or who are the public, the staff who are not necessary to be at this meeting should be asked to leave. And if you can only have 56 people in this room, then there should be, it should be required that people except for news media be sitting in those chairs because there were chairs available, but we were at that capacity, so we weren't allowed in. So I just would like, like you to think about when that comes up in the future. How might be the way to have the most participation from the people who are here, who are going to speak to that, to that particular agenda? Related to that, while we're talking about transparency and access, I'm really grateful that you, that the county posted all of the boards and commissions that have openings. And that was on the county website, and I noticed that a lot of people, including myself, shared that out to the community. However, none of those listings were clickable. So for instance, I'll just start at the top of the list, the Affordable Housing Authority. It doesn't say when that meets, where that meets, or what the time commitment is. Is it accessible? Like, if I'm in a wheelchair, can I get there? Is it, is there sign language interpretation if I can't hear? I'm guessing there isn't because I've noticed we don't do that here. So those are just some of the things that as you move towards transparency, that's a lot. People just look at that and go, I don't know what this is. And then they don't apply. And only the insiders know and know how to apply. Thank you.
Ms. Parsons, thank you for both those comments. I do want to say we're committed to access to the room. Even Controller Bateman and I had a conversation with security after that meeting to talk about how we might respond differently. But we do need to create some policy around that. And I also think it's my understanding that this is the first time, at least in a while, that we've published board openings in the way we have. And I think we have a lot of room and space to improve on that. So we need to take those under advisement. Thanks for bringing some ideas and solutions.
Good morning, Commissioners. The, we're talking about money over and over and over again because it's, it's mother's note. The county raised taxes last year for this year. We're grateful for the fact that you weren't, didn't have to raise taxes for 19 years. But it was a steep tax increase. We have 12.2% of people in Dolphin County in poverty. The average rate in Pennsylvania is 10%, but it's 12.2% in Dolphin County. And when I'm asking you to consider something we talked about earlier in January, February of last year, the, in this, trying to determine where money was going, we determined, find out that 45% of all the contracts issued by City of Harrisburg go outside of the city. That's tax revenue going to other counties and cities. School district has a similar ratio. I don't know what the Dolphin County is, but I suspect it's the same. Without a study, without having to pay for a study, you could develop a procurement policy in which you say that we're going to make sure that people who contract with Dolphin County hire people who are in Dolphin County or if not Dolphin County contractors who are headquarters in the Dolphin County. Why? It keeps more of the tax revenue in the county. Notice, this is not racial. This is based upon a substantial reason. And Mary Powell did the research on it. Under Commerce Clause, if you have a legitimate government purpose, you can do it. Under Privileges and Immunity Clause, if you have substantial reason, you can do it. Under Equal Protection Clause, if you're a rational relationship to legitimate governmental purpose. Poverty is the force leading killer in terms of people dying. That's the substantial reason. 12.2% gets you there. You do this, but every contract that comes in requiring that, looking at it, if they're outside the county, where are the county, where are the employees from Dolphin County? You want to keep as much of the tax revenue in the county for everyone. And everyone's going to benefit from it. Like very much if we could, is have Mary Powell send to each of you the analysis of that so you could take a look at it and consider it. It's simple, it doesn't add in bureaucracy, you just add it to your RFPs and you put it in the percentages that you want of residents. And you put it in percentages that you want in terms of vendors. Again, how do we keep more money inside the county? Thank you.
If I could just follow up, I want to thank you for the time that you spent years ago bringing to our attention the disparities of the United States Federal Courthouse. And even though it was considered local, the definition of local was 200 miles away. So we had, we had qualified individuals and companies within actually the city limits. They could have done some of the work. I do all those conversations.
I do want to just speak to our process over the last year. And I will say this, as a unified Board of Commissioners, we've asked employees prior to hiring, if they're in the county, we've asked vendors if they have headquarters in the county. That has been a priority of this board and I believe that will continue to be a priority. Certainly, I think a systematic or a policy is something that we can consider. At the same time, there are sometimes vendors who will do better work for the county at a better cost that might be in another county. And we have to always weigh those considerations when we're looking at budgeting and we're looking at the challenges. But we certainly know that keeping taxpayer dollars in Dolphin County is important. Any other public comment for today? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Still move.
Second.
We are adjourned.